I will call to order our regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Malden December 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Let the record reflect that all council persons are here, myself and staff, our administrator, Mr. Madden, various members of staff I see out in the audience, along with past mayors and influential people and our citizens. We're glad to see each one of you come out this evening. So, thank you for being here. Our invocation and our pledge of allegiance will be administered by Councilwoman Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon us. Lord, please forgive us of our sins. Father, please be with those who have been affected by the tornadoes. Lord, wrap them in your loving arms and comfort them and provide for them in this difficult time. Please heal those who are sick. Father, I ask that you heal our nation and to help us to love one another despite our differences. Thank you for this holy season. Please help us to be a shining light to others. Lord, I pray for this council and ask that you guide us in the decisions we make for the city and its residents. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is our nation, under God, indivisible, and just as it is from. Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Again, I also failed to recognize our city attorney, Mr. Dugan, is with us tonight also. Should we be okay? Okay. Also, would like to recognize several former mayors we have with us tonight, former mayor, Mr., let's see, he goes way back, Mr. Wayne Crick. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being there, being here. Goodness. And along with our former mayor, Mr. R.C. Jones. Good to see you. And former mayor, Mr. Don Godby. Thank you. Mr. Green was gonna be here, but he had just a little bit of setback and they would prefer him not to come out, so... deferring to his family members, he chose not to come out. If it's up to him, he'd be here, you know that. Eddie and Sarah thought it'd be best if he didn't, so we would not be, but he's here with us in spirit, he said. Appreciate that. One of the things I have the privilege of doing is several proclamations, so I'm gonna As I said, it is a privilege sometimes to, well, all the time to do these proclamations, but there's some that come up that can touch our heart. And when you get into this season right now, which we reflect on all the great things that's going on, we pause to give thanks. We also can be a very lonely time for those that have lost a dear one close by or close to them, a family member, and especially a sibling. I would ask, if I may, Recreation Director, Mr. Comalander, is Mr. Stewart coming? Mr. Andre, just Bart, all right, come along with our Chair of Recreation, Mr. Black, if I'm alone in it. I'd also like to ask, Mr. Crawford, would you join us? And the kids, but all the kids want to come on up too. Mr. Crawford, I'd like to present you with this proclamation. I'll read it for the audience. Whereas Tristan Crawford participated in Malden Recreation Youth Sports for many years, and whereas after Tristan graduated with a BS degree in mechanical engineering from Clemson University, he volunteered as a baseball coach with the city. And whereas through his coaching activities, he mentored young athletes. Whereas Tristan passed away November 13th, 2021, after a battle with cancer. And therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, South Carolina, along with the city council and citizens of Malden, are thankful for the contributions to our Recreation Department and community by Mr. Tristan Crawford. We send our condolences to his family and friends dated this 20th day of December in the year 2021.
It's an honor and preference to be here tonight and on behalf of, let's say, his mom and Patty and Kayden, you're just blessed and thankful for the opportunity. Tristan loved kids, loved and approved the athletic department as far as really and under him. They just gave him an opportunity to be involved with youth, played sports here. Once he graduated high school and he went to Clemson, he could come back when we had games during the week, so he could be with the kids and be here for them. And most of all, Tristan was a believer. Tristan followed Christ. And Patty said it the other day, our Tristan passed away, he had a stomach, he got a stomach bug, dead October. He wasn't sick. Two weeks later, he was diagnosed with testicular cancer. Two weeks later, he passed away. Our baby wasn't sick. This was God's plan. And if he would've asked us, we would've said no, and then the message, I would say, is always be ready. And we trust in God. We trust in God wholeheartedly, and we know that as long as we love, trust, God loves him more. And we, we're not grieving Tristan, grieving because we missed Tristan. We're just honored and thankful for recognition. And again, we just want to give the glory to God, because he doesn't make mistakes. All things are for his glory. I know that Patty and Kayden and Wutz would say the same thing. Tristan's honored to be able to receive this recognition. I know he's silent, and it's so, very, really, Andre.
Cam, we got, we got one more thing for you. I'm gonna give this to Melissa, if ever have something. Yeah, I just want to tell you, as a parent, you've been with these guys for a long time. Let me get that back. But I just want, I just want to tell you thank you from, as a parent and the rec department, because, you know, it's hard to find coaches that come out and be dedicated and love those kids, Tristan was one of those, and he was always there. He could've been doing 10 million different other things at his age, but he, he came out there and he taught those kids, and it's been real tough on my son Cash and our family, but I just want to tell you thank you. In memory of Tristan Taylor Crawford, youth player, coach, mentor, friend, dedicated service, coaching of the youth, Malden Recreation, 2021. There you have it. Sorry. I just want to tell you thank you again. Appreciate everything that you do, and I hope you all come back, and we love y'all. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Just one more comment. Thank you very much, Mark. We really appreciate it. On behalf of Tristan, in continuing his ministry, we've started Tristan's Hope. So if you get a chance to go online and check out the website, tells you, it just gives you some information on what we're trying to do. We want to be there for families in need, we want to be there for families in tragedy like this. Most of all, we want to be there to disciple and bring families to peace. Tristan'shope.com, T-R-Y-S-T-O-N-S, hope.com. And it, seriously, it is an honor and a privilege to give us this time, this record. We really think.
I didn't listen. Accused of that. I've known Dale and his family and the two young girls that were growing up in our church for many, many years, and I've had the privilege of serving with them on council for the last seven years. I'm gonna miss him. Still know where he lives, though. Still know the combination to get in the pool, so we're gonna still stay in touch with him that, but I didn't ask him. I did give him the courtesy to tell him what I was gonna do. He told me, no, I don't want you to do that. And I said, well, I know that, but gonna do it anyway. So, allow this on my behalf, as well as our city council, a proclamation. Whereas Dale Black started serving the city of Malden in 1989 as a city councilman, was elected again, and has served continuous since 2006. And whereas Councilman Black was born in Danville, Illinois, but has called Malden home since the early 1970s. And whereas Councilman Black has been a tremendous asset on council, helping to lead the city in times of fantastic economic development growth. And whereas Councilman Black will now have extra time to spend with his wife Judy, his children, and grandchildren. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with all the residents of our city and my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim that we are proud of Councilman Black's public service with the city of Malden, and we are privileged to know him. We wish him well, dated his 20th day of December, 2021. I believe was for me to not be reelected so I could spend more time with my wife, my family, grandkids, kids, and we'd spend more time together. But I would like to say thank you to all the people that supported me over the years. I've had a, had a joyous time and some hard times while I've been on council for 28 years. And it's, it's been a joy, and I hope that I've done some good for the citizens of this town. I'm gonna miss seeing all of the department heads and employees. We have some great department heads and employees in this city. Without them, the city would not be possible. My friends that come and support me all the time, here, at home, away from home, I appreciate them. I want to say thanks to them. I don't know where to say thank you, or I don't hate, I don't hate you, but I don't like you, to R.C., because R.C. got me involved in this. When he first elected mayor back in 90, he got me involved in this. And I stayed on like a hardhead, I guess, but I kept on trying, and I got defeated one time, gone for four years, and I came back. I hope I've done some good for the people. I've enjoyed it, love everybody. And Mr. Brett, Mr. Crick, all these people, they've always been behind me, helping me, all the department heads, I just want to say thank you to all of you, and I love you. Also, Malden, South Carolina, with great appreciation, sincere thanks for outstanding public service. Dale Black was recognized for his service and dedication as council member of the city of Malden, January 1989 to December 2001, January 2006 to December 2021, this day. Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Mayor. Please, y'all, hang around after the council meeting tonight, and there'll be a reception in the, or you're out here for Dale, so we invite you to attend that also. If I give him the box, is he gonna put it in the box, or are you gonna make him hang it up? Okay, I ain't gonna give him the box, because it'd be put up in the box and put in that closet. And we'll proceed with the agenda items and a reading and approval of minutes, minutes of the city council meeting, November 15th, 2021. What's the pleasure of council?
Motion to be accepted as distributed.
Motion to be accepted as distributed, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. King. Any clarifications, discussion? Here none, all of us in favor of acceptance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the minutes of November 15th, 2021 are accepted as submitted. Special call, council meeting, November 29th, 2021. Counsel.
Big excepted, that's true, Mayor.
Motion, Mr. Black, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds, any discussions, clarifications? Here none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the minutes are accepted as submitted. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay, our first public comment session, there's no one signed up for agenda items, so we'll move along. Is there anyone online?
Mayor, no one has indicated online that they would like...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Madden. Report from our city administrator, Mr. Madden.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I do have one item that I would like to report. I would like to take a moment to recognize Assistant Recreation Director Willie Stewart. Willie graduated for a nine-month program from the South Carolina Leadership Enhancement and Development Institute for the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association. I want to take a moment just to recognize Willie, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for your dedication.
Gentlemen over there, along with Bart, stay quite busy. You don't see any, any cobwebs around their doorway, they're constantly running, so we certainly appreciate our Recreation Department, all it means to us. Next is a report from standing committees, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think while we all are, all personally probably spending in a frenzy right now because of the season, the city is doing a great job of holding expenditures down in totality through each department. Nothing major coming out of finance and policy. I did want to make mention, though, to, I'm not sure if you guys received the email, but wanted to make you guys aware, the city's financial advisor, Ms. Crowley, lost her husband one day last week, and just wanted to make, make comment to that, to keep Ms. Crowley, that's a small firm, it's her and her husband, I believe, are the only two employees, so keep her in your thoughts and prayers as she moves forward into this season. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report at this time, other than to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Public works, Mr. Crayley.
I have nothing reported this time.
Sir, he cannot plan and develop, Mr. Matt.
No report at this time.
Building cousin development, Ms. Kuzner.
No report at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Recreation, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report at this time, but I'd just like to remind the people in the city of Malden that Recreation Department has awarded the State Recreation Department in the state of South Carolina. So that's a big tribute to staff, Bart, Willie, Andre, and all the staff at Recreation and Sports Center. And this is a award that was awarded throughout the state, and Malden was, came out first as the premier recreation program in the state of South Carolina. I just wanted to recognize our staff and all for the great work they did on that.
Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda, we'll move into unfinished business. Ordinances, Ms. Miller.
The first ordinance is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately 2.3 acres located at Ashmore Bridge Road and Fort Shoals Road, providing an effective date.
Ms. Miller, coming out of building development, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this 2.3 acres will be used for amenities that will serve the Arden Woods subdivision. And at this time, I would move to approve this rezoning on second reading.
Ms. Kuzner, I have a motion to approve on second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Black, is there any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Ms. Miller.
Next is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately 5.6 acres located at 513 North Main Street, and providing an effective date. This is at the intersection of North Main Street and Knollwood Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also coming out of business development services, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to rezon this property at 513 North Main Street on second reading.
Ms. Kuzner, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second in stereo for Mr. Mattney and Mr. Black. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to rezon property consisting of 5.6 acres at 513 North Main Street on second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, that finishes unfinished business. We now move into new business. Ms. Miller.
This is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of 0.5 acres located at 301 East Butler Road, and providing an effective date. This is across the street from the CVS on East Butler.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also from business development, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is being rezoned from our 12 residential to C2 general commercial, and I will make a motion on first reading to approve this.
If a motion on first reading for rezoning at 301 East Butler, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Black, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the rezoning of 301 East Butler Road, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries on first reading. Ms. Miller.
Next is an amendment to Section 3, colon, 12, point 3, point 8 of the Malden zoning ordinance, to provide a description of moving trucks and trailers.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also coming out of business development, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an amendment that clarifies the truck and trailer rentals. I will make a motion to approve this amendment regarding trailer rentals on first reading.
Motion on first reading, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Ms. King, is there any discussion?
This, Mayor.
Black.
Just for the record, this was passed by council on April 19th of this year, so this is just a clarification of the change in the ordinance effect.
Black, any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion for an amendment on first reading for Section 1312 dot 3 dot A, providing a description of moving trucks and trailers, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries on first reading. Next, we move into standing committee items. Ms. Miller.
Authorization is requested to approve Amendments 3 and 4 to the sewer agreement dated March 17th, 2015, between the city of Malden and Fraser Engineering.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. I believe we'll pick on someone else right now, Ms. Kuzner, so we'll go to Mr. Crayley.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Amendments 3 and 4 to the agreement between city of Malden and Fraser Engineering.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mattney, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve Amendments 3 and 4 for Fraser Engineering on our sewer system, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Okay, Ms. Miller.
Authorization is requested to approve a contract with Schindler Custom for the maintenance of the elevator at the Senior Center.
Also coming out of public works, Mr. Crayley.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Schindler Custom, the maintenance of our elevators at the Senior Center. I mean, I'm sorry, at the Senior Center.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the contract for the maintenance of the elevator at the Senior Center with Schindler Customs, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to review and approve the Greenville Legislation Delegation Transportation Committee Participation Agreement Project, 588.01.
Also from public works, Mr. Crayley.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Greenville Legislation Delegation Transportation Committee Participation Agreement, 588 dot 01.
This would be a two-part, you want to include the second part in there as well as the participation agreement, then the addition.
With the, oh, and the...
Requested the, the $180,000, referring to, yes, and to approve the, adding the additional
$180,000 to the participation group, to the participation in the MM RP.
Thank you, Mr. Crayley. I have a motion for the approval of the participation agreement with the addition of $180,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King, is there any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of approval of the participation agreement with GDLDTC with the addition of $180,000 to the amount that they would monitor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimously. Ms. King, I'm sorry, Ms. Miller. I wrote King, you got Miller. Sorry.
Council is requested to approve an agreement with Davis and Floyd to conduct a feasibility study for a 2,400-foot multi-use trail along Gilder Creek.
Also from public works, Mr. Crayley.
This time, I'd like to make a request, a motion for approval of the agreement with Davis and Floyd to conduct the feasibility test of the multi-use trail along Gilder Creek.
Motion to approve the agreement, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mattney, is there any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agreement with Davis and Floyd for the feasibility study for a multi-use trail, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries 7-0. Next item on our agenda comes to us as committee as a whole, won't be the pleasure of council.
Have we considered this through the informal method?
I have a motion from Mr. Mattney to consider the agenda item and the... I have a motion from Mr. Mattany to consider the agenda item via the informal method, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King, is there any discussion? Favor of the uh, going to consider next item in the informal method, is committee, will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign? Hear none, we will consider ourselves committee of the whole to consider the city administrators' contract. That would probably fit under finance. Mr. Reynolds, are you good, you good with that one?
I am fine with that, Mr. Mayor, if you would, um, you know, as we talked about this stuff in executive session, I would like some direction on the changes that were talked about after your meeting with Mr. Madden.
Okay, the items that uh, we were requested to consider uh, or suggested to consider was uh, to approve an increase in uh, the annual salary to $130,000 with a new contract for three years. To be commenced in January the first, 2022 through December 31st, 24, if I did my math correctly. I don't have my packet in front of me. Um, and also to award for a continuing service over the last several years, which you know has been very trying for our city with, as we dealt with the pandemic and the resulting sickness as well as shortage of manpower. So that our administrator has done an admirable job above and beyond the call of duty. So we will, uh, requested to consider award of a performance bonus in the amount of $5,000. Those are the three items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to propose those amendments to Mr. Madden's contract as stated.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second for Ms. King, is there any discussion? We'll, alright, so the uh, motion to uh, award a new contract effective with January 1st, 2022 due date in the amount of $130,000 annual salary, along with the performance bonus of $5,000. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign? Hear none, the motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Madden.
Thank you, sir. Now to our next item of public comment, anyone signed up? No one signed up for that. Alright, so uh, council concerns.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Matt.
Mr. Mayor.
Merry Christmas.
That's not what I was gonna say. I had something else. No, we didn't get obviously the chance earlier to uh, comment on Mr. Black, but I did want to take a moment to tell Mr. Black, both publicly and personally, how much I've appreciated sitting beside him. Um, actually for six, six years we've served together. And you know, I think just, um, you know, the neat thing, sitting up here looking out and seeing how many mayors you've served with, um, that's just kind of neat for someone not as old as you to sit back and look at, that uh, giving your time is, is, you know, we talk about the most valuable thing you have is time and um, and I just personally appreciate how much time you've given to the city away from your family and, and just publicly want to say that. Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Also Merry Christmas.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that I was thinking back the other day and uh, I think in my time on council, I've served with six different mayors, I think. Six different city administrators, numerous public works directors, fire chiefs. I think Holly has been with us longer than anybody in terms of department head. Mark and Willie and all them, I just think they're doing a great job, I love them to death and I'm gonna miss all of them. And they'll continue to do a great job for the city, I know that, I have no doubt on that. But uh, just wanted to thank my family, my wife especially and my family for giving me the time to do this. It hasn't always been easy, 'cause I've had to change plans and change trips and all, just to try to make the meetings. When I first got into this, I never missed a meeting, RC could tell you that, 'cause I would change everything just so I could be at a meeting. 'Cause I felt that the citizens deserved the service from an elected official. And what really troubles me is not the fact that I lost, it was God's will, but the fact that only 7% of our registered voters bothered to turn out to vote. That means you've got 7% of the registered voters that's controlling everything that happens for the entire city. And that doesn't seem fair to me, but I have, you know, if you don't exercise your voting rights, you have no one to blame but yourself on outcome, whether it be good or bad. So I just want to state that and I'd like to thank everybody on this council that's been going and working with you, all the department heads, especially Ms. Miller. She's been a great help, all my friends, all my business owners that I've associated with over the years, gone on trips with and all. Just love them to death and thank you everything for the opportunity and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Just from uh, my point of view, as we're in the uh, season that we're in today, I think you see more and more people wishing, as well as cards that we're getting, that the two big words are joy and peace. And we've got a lot to be joyful for. Uh, we live in a beautiful peaceful city. But join with me in adding one additional item as we go into next year, let's pray for stability. We don't always agree with one another, but we respect one another. So if you would uh, join me as we go through this next season or start through this season and next year, uh, let's keep joy, peace and stability on our mind and have a ball, and the city of Malden is a great place to be in. We appreciate you very much, all those that are serving and that have served, uh, along with, I think Mr. Allgood is in the back, he'll be joining us. So Frank, thank you for coming out this evening. We'll get you all sworn in in January, but enjoy the holidays before then. Next item on the agenda is adjournment, what's the pleasure of council?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Kuzner, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed like sign? Hear none, we stand adjourned.